I'd like to call the meeting in order. If you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone, and welcome everyone who's watching from home. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Present.
Trustee Gett.
Present.
Trustee Kazam.
Present.
Trustee Goff.
Trustee Wigington.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
All right, we do have a quorum, one absent and one remote. We would be at approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on February 7th, 2023. I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any questions on the minutes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? You guys have it. We would be at comments from the audience. If there's anyone here tonight to make comments to the board, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. Any comments from the audience? Going once, twice, comments are closed. We would be at old business, any old business to come before the board? Hearing none, we'll get right into new business, quite a few items before us tonight. The first is approval of the street closure for St. Patrick's Day event on March 17th, 2023. Trustee DeVore, I would ask for a motion to approve that.
I approve the street closure for St. Patrick's Day.
Second.
All right, back to you, Trustee DeVore.
Okay, so Billy and Lauren Plastik, the owners of Sullivan's, have once again requested for street closure for St. Patrick's Day. They, you do have a letter in your packet just briefly showing the outline of the day and requesting the same thing that they always do. I know that they have been in contact with Chief Sutton about all the police coverage that we would need and how we would go about with the street closure. So nothing is changing on this, and since it's an annual event, they were not requested to come tonight, so that's why you do not see them in the audience.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions for Trustee DeVore, comments? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
That passes. Next is approval of Resolution 2023-01, a resolution regarding the release of closed session minutes and destruction of closed session verbatim recordings. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-01.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, Trustee DeVore, and we'll go to you, and then to counsel after that.
Okay, so last week in our closed session, we went through our last set of minutes that we needed to determine if they were going to be released or if we were going to keep them closed. So these are, this is just approving the minutes that we determined were ready to be released for public record.
Thank you. Anything else, counsel?
No, Mayor, nothing to add.
All right, good job. Any discussion on that? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is Resolution 2023-02, a resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement between the Village of Peoria Heights and the Policeman's benevolent Labor Committee. This is a joint resolution from Administration and Public Safety. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-02.
And Trustee Wigington, is there a second?
There's a second.
All right, Sarah, we'll let you cover the financial aspect of this. We'll turn it over to Trustee Wigington after that. Please go ahead.
Okay, perfect. So the collective bargaining agreement, it doesn't have a ton of changes, but you'll see the change highlighted in the yellow over green on your packet. So financially, the changes that are in this agreement would be that we did, there is change in there to increase the retirement insurance coverage up to $300 per month. There is a physical fitness incentive, and we are increasing wages in this contract to be competitive with other life markets. So other towns that are very simpler in size are currently, their officers are being paid more even though they have less calls. So we're just increasing the cost of living wages to match up to that. I believe that's all that's going to be changed, and if it has anything to do with finance, Mayor.
Thank you. Then before we go to Trustee Wigington, in your opinion, then, my question for you is, can the village afford this?
Yes, we can afford it. There've been lots of grants in the last year or so that have allowed us to really get in good standing with the police department. It still is keeping them within their budget, and due to diligent work between Stephanie and Administrator Sutton, they did lay this out for us on how we would pay for it and that we can't afford it.
Thank you. Trustee Wigington?
Thank you, Mayor. From a public safety perspective, this collective bargaining agreement that you see is imperative. We have crime that is rising in our neighboring communities. We have not seen those numbers that our neighboring communities have had because of our men and women that are serving in the police department. And as Trustee DeVore had mentioned, we need to keep competitive with our salaries and our benefits to keep those, to keep us protected from the rising crime that unfortunately our neighboring communities are experiencing. We are also adding some additional things for our police officers, just so that they know that they are appreciated in this contract. Do appreciate counsel, as well as Chief Sutton, Administrator Sutton reviewing some of these items with me. And they mirror the terminology that you see, mirror those reflected in the state laws, ILCS, that we see. So I think all in all, this was worked out with Chief Sutton and the Police Benevolent Labor Committee. So I think we see the best product here. And in fact, there's an urgent need because our existing contract is expiring as of the end of April. So it is imperative, and I would, as I seconded, I would urge this, the board to approve it as written.
Thank you both, and well said. Trustees, any questions or comments? Okay, if you're ready for the question. I do want to take this opportunity as Mayor to give my sincere thanks to the Peoria Heights Police Department. This item covers those covered by a collective bargaining agreement, but my appreciation goes to everyone from the chief, assistant chief, on down, and everyone on staff who works with the police department. So thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
That passes. Thank you again. Next is Resolution 2023-02. Yet again, it also is a joint resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement between the Village of Peoria Heights and the Policeman's, oh, I'm sorry, we already did that one. Resolution 2023-3, a resolution approving an amendment to the Public Works Department collective bargaining agreement. It's a joint resolution, again, from Administration and Public Works. Trustee DeVore, I would ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-3.
And in the absence of Trustee Goff, if someone would be good enough to second?
Second.
All right. Trustee DeVore, please go ahead.
Okay, so the Public Works bargaining agreement, everything in their contract is basically staying the same, except for this fiscal year, we are increasing their wages, their cost of living increase is going up. But everything else in their agreement would stay the same. So next year, they would be at the same cost of living increase that they have been at. We, by approving this resolution now, this is getting it so that we will be doing the resolutions for the police department and the Public Works Department the same time every time there's a renewal.
Thank you so much for that discussion, trustees. All right, well, I would just say that I think this continues to make us an employer of choice. I appreciate everyone's support of both of these collective bargaining agreements. As a small community, we can't pay at the top of the tier, but we can strive to be an employer, again, of choice, and I think we're doing that. So I too appreciate Public Works, and my thanks to them. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of Ordinance 2023-1696, an ordinance correcting amortization schedule for the $1,665,000 taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2022, of the Village of Peoria Heights, Peoria County, Illinois, issued on February 1, 2022, for the purpose of refunding the taxable general obligation bonds, Series 2016 of said village. Trustee DeVore, I would ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance 2023-1696.
Second, please.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Back to you, Trustee DeVore.
Okay, I'm going to just explain these, these next three together. But the first ordinance and the second two kind of all go together. This is all about the bond that we have for transkers. So the very first ordinance, the 1696, this is because there was an error on some of the documentation that came from the bank with our payment schedule of that bond. We have been paying it correctly and everything, but this is just making an amendment so that, like, all the legalities and the paperwork is done correctly. The second two ordinances, we levy for this bond every year. We did it earlier in the year. Because transkers is paying what they're supposed to be paying on time and everything is going great, this is now abating those taxes that we levied is what's going to happen for the next two ordinances.
I appreciate that explanation, very good. Question, counsel, do you want to add anything?
The only thing I would add is, we already did the abatements, but we did them under the old amortization schedule, so the abatements, if it sounds familiar from about a month and a half ago, we're just updating the abatement resolution. So it's that automatic property tax that gets levied unless we do the abatement. So we're correcting that to match the correction in the ordinance for the bonds.
Thank you for that explanation. Discussion?
So counsel, this stems from when we refinanced the bonds last year.
Correct.
To ensure that we had the lowest possible rate to save the village tens of thousands of dollars.
I think it was into the six figures.
Oh, okay.
$300,000, I think.
$300,000.
Yeah.
So when we did this last year, we're just basically correcting a banking error.
Exactly. And I hand it out, just so everybody knows, I hand it out a comparison of the original amortization and the corrected amortization. What you'll see is actually under the corrected, the total amount that the village pays is actually $800 less than what was under the original. It's just some of the payments earlier in the life of the bonds are a little higher, and then they go down. So, you know, it's a mistake, but it's not like the village is paying overall more money because it's different each year from what the original schedule is.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, just again, this gives me the opportunity to congratulate the board. $300,000 is a lot of money for us, so thanks for doing this. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee, Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, following up, approval of Ordinance 2023-1697, an ordinance revising the abatement amount of the general obligation taxes levied for the year 2022 to pay debt service on the corrected taxable general obligation bonds alternate revenue source, excuse me, Series 2022 of the Village of Peoria Heights, Peoria County, Illinois. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2023-1697.
Second?
Second.
I think you've already said it, Trustee DeVore, but is anything that you want to add on this?
Nope.
All right, any discussion on this? As stated previously by Trustee DeVore, the previous resolution, this resolution, the next resolution are all go hand in hand. If you're ready for the question, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
That passes. Then finishing up this series of resolutions, we would be at approval of Ordinance 2023-1698, an ordinance revising the abatement amount of the special service area, number one, taxes for the year 2022 to pay debt service on the corrected taxable general obligation bonds alternate revenue source, Series 2022 of the Village of Peoria Heights, Peoria County, Illinois. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for another motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2023-1698.
And a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
That passes. Next is approval of a donation to the Peoria Heights Community Band in the amount of $1,000. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the donation to the Peoria Heights Community Band.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Trustee DeVore.
Okay, so this is a budgeted item. We have done this every year to help, you know, aid the band in being able to play. This is just protocol to approve that.
Discussion?
Mayor, this, these donations were budgeted for, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
That passes. Next is approval of a donation to the Peoria Heights Arts Collaborative in the amount of $5,000. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the donation to the Peoria Heights Arts Collaborative.
Second, please.
Second.
Go ahead, Trustee DeVore.
This is also a budgeted item that we have. This is the same amount we have donated to them the last few years. We, they did come and talk to us in our last meeting, and so this is just approving the donation of funds.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
That passes. Next is approval of non-union full-time employee evaluation merit increases. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve non-union full-time employee evaluation merit increases.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded by Trustee Wigington. Go ahead, Trustee DeVore.
Okay, so are non-union full-time employees are not under the same collective bargaining agreements as some of our other employees? So they receive their merit or their increases based on an evaluation? It is up to a percentage, it's not a guaranteed percentage based on the level of service. So again, we've done this the last few years, and this is just approving it to move forward into this new fiscal year.
Questions? Oh, Mr. Administrator, go ahead if you.
I would just add, this includes, or this covers six employees, three administrative staff here, Fire Chief Thompson, Deputy Chief Ahart, and also Superintendent Chandler. It covers six positions, and the total is $6,750.49, and all six evaluations were outstanding. Just a little bit of information for the board.
Discussion?
Thank you for that.
Do we, just a point of order, do we have like a chart that shows what the raises are? Because I think to have it be clear for the record what we're voting on, I didn't see it in the packet, but.
The, yeah, the ordinance is a max of 2% of the salary in the ordinance, and, yeah, and we, there's a, there's a formula worksheet, counsel, that I go by that the board, I think they passed it about three years ago.
We can read that, those positions into the record if you prefer.
I think that would be beneficial if we were looking.
Mr. Administrator, repeat those positions for the record.
Sure. The administrative assistant, financial assistant, water technician, fire chief, deputy chief, superintendent of public works.
And that was deputy police chief, then, right?
Deputy police chief, yes.
Okay, thanks. Madam Clerk, you got that?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Any further discussion?
If you are ready, well, just let me again chime in and say thanks to our team here. We've got a fantastic team of people. They're small, but they are extremely talented, and they're very dedicated. So thanks to everyone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
That passes. Next, we'd be at approval of Ordinance 2023-1699, an ordinance imposing responsible bidder requirements for public works projects. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2023-1699.
And a second?
Second.
All right, go ahead, Trustee DeVore.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm actually going to defer to Wayne to give an explanation for this.
All right, Wayne, wake up over there.
So what this ordinance does, it really adds or supplements prevailing wage ordinance that the board passed a few years ago, still requiring prevailing wage payment on any project in which the village has monies, meaning a project that we would let or that we're supplementing payment on, like a business development district project or a TIP project, something like that. So what this does is it sets a limit for the other component that we talk often about, and that's the training and apprenticeship program. So many contractors, larger contractors, have training and apprenticeship programs. However, smaller contractors probably don't. So what this does is takes a little bit of that burden off of these smaller projects where, like a BDD project, that's less than $10,000. So that's the typical BDD project. So still would require the payment of prevailing wages, but wouldn't necessarily require a registered training and apprenticeship program. So that's basically what this does, is take some of that burden off of the smaller projects. Typical to have these types of provisions for municipalities, and really, it buries on the amount that each municipality wants to impose.
Thank you. Discussion?
Yes, so as it's written now, do all projects require it, an apprenticeship program?
So you get the money for new awnings, lawn and contractor, it puts a burden on some smaller projects.
So I had reached out to Trustee DeVore on this issue, because I was a little unsure on this, and so I did look it up on the Illinois Municipal League, and as a, as a home rule community, we have the option to set these standards. But non-home rule communities, by law, they, any expense that exceeds $25,000 is covered under an apprenticeship program. So in essence, our ordinance here sets the bar even higher on to require any project of $10,000 or less, while non-incorporated, non-home rule entities, it's $25,000 or less. So I wonder if we could reflect the, what our non-home rule communities have and set that standard at $25,000, easing the burden, especially with these HUD contracts coming as well.
I would only say, well, we, this was discussed with the West Central Illinois Building Trades and Labor Council, and so this number satisfied them, really based on our experience, which is that $10,000 mark. Most of the HUD contracts would fall within that as well, and most BDD contracts. You know, it's certainly a board decision.
I would prefer to keep it at the $10,000. I don't, we don't need to worry about marrying our neighbors and stuff. We take care of ourselves. I'd just like to keep it at $10,000.
Where, Wayne, Mr. Aldrich, where did the $10,000 come from? Who gave?
It came from, it was based on the BDD, standard BDD projects. The max. But that's typical, and then.
The max, $10,000.
$10,000, yes.
There was conversation in some of these beautification projects that we offer our residents and business owners that they shouldn't be burdened with that for business, for, you know, items that are going to cost $7,500 or $10,000. It was just too much, they almost couldn't find people to do the work for that amount of money.
Oh, I certainly agree with that, Trustee Kazam. I just wonder why we, as a village, who are, you know, we're having a lot of projects happening, and we want to encourage growth here in the village, why we are putting this restriction on ourselves at the $10,000 mark when our non-home rule communities, by law, have a, can potentially attract more construction projects than we can, because we're making it more restrictive than our non-home rule communities.
A non-home rule community wouldn't have probably a responsible bidder ordinance. That's what this centers around, not prevailing wage, responsible bidder.
The, I just feel like there's a lot of unanswered questions. This is the first time I've seen this, first reading of this, and unfortunately, you know, being that this is, deals with public works things, and I don't have the chairman of the Public Works Committee or superintendent of Public Works here with a lot of unanswered questions, I would move to put on the table this motion until we do have them present.
I don't think that's necessary. We have a, we have a responsible bidder ordinance currently. This is amending it. It's lowering the threshold. If you want to change the policy, then make, make an amendment at a, or make an introduction at a future meeting to amend the policy or vote against it. So what is your, if you want to offer amendment, go ahead. What is, you made a motion to table?
I did.
Is there a second? The motion fails for lack of a second. We're back at the main question. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Nay.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Before we move on to miscellaneous business, Trustee DeVore, I want to thank you for being so well-prepared. You had a whole list of resolutions. You explained everyone very well, so that makes things run very smoothly. I appreciate that.
Anytime, Mayor.
Okay, we've been miscellaneous business. Any miscellaneous?
Mayor, I just want a reminder to all of the trustees, the, believe it or not, after three years, the COVID rules are, under the Open Meetings Act, are coming to an end on May 11. The governor has indicated that he's going to allow the expiration of the emergency declaration that has been in place, it will be more than three years, three years and two months. All that means for us is that, you know, like, Trustee DeVore is participating in my phone tonight, that was permitted under the emergency rules under the Open Meetings Act. Mayor has, has agreed that the pandemic being what it is, that we're going to follow the state guidelines for remote attendance at meetings. When that ends on May 11, we do have a remote attendance policy, but it does require a vote to approve remote attendance at that meeting, and it does require that you be absent because of work or there's some other reasons we don't need to get into tonight. But I just wanted to remind everybody, that's coming to an end. just wanted to remind everybody that's coming to an end, uh, on May 11.
Uh, thank you. Counsel, I'd ask if, when you get the time, if you'd send an email out to the board so they have that in front of them in writing and include the policy that we do currently have.
Absolutely.
Any other miscellaneous?
I have a few items, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, and then, uh, Mr. Aldrich, after the administrator gets finished, I'm gonna call upon you if you have anything to report.
I have a few items, Mayor, for, uh, miscellaneous business.
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, a few complaints have been, uh, a few citizens have reached out to me regarding, um, the, uh, rock that is at the dog park. Uh, apparently the rock that's there now is a larger rock, and it's, it's pretty sharp. Um, and they have requested that, um, we look into replacing the rock with a more hall-friendly rock, like a pea gravel. Um, and I know I've, I've spoken with Chief Sutton about this as well, but apparently when they build dog parks, a lot of times, or a dog runs, they use like a smaller, more smoother pea gravel. Um, so I was, uh, curious if we could, uh, replace the rock at the dog park with pea gravel.
Thanks for bringing that up. I think the administrator has an answer.
Well, as we discussed earlier, there are, there are a couple different options, um, to replace the entire dog park with pea gravel, remove the fence. We're looking at approximately $1,500. Um, there is a fence dividing the two sections of the ball, the dog park. I know we discussed maybe some options. Um, I think what I'm worried about is removing the large rocks for the small dogs and then causing other issues for the large dogs. So if we, we kept half of it with the small rocks, the other half the large, I think would probably be a, a win-win for everybody. It would be half the cost, and, uh, you know, I think it would maybe alleviate future issues. Uh, and I think that'd be something that residents would be happy about. So that's something we could do fairly easy.
Okay. And if, if we were to do that, uh, re, uh, replace half of it, um, and we, we discover at a later date that maybe the smaller rock does work better, we can always replace the other half?
Definitely.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Um, one more thing, sorry, Mayor.
No, go ahead.
Um, with summer approaching and the loud music returning, um, from, um, I got a call today from a resident that lives off Prospect, that, uh, Poor Brothers is already starting to advertise their, their.
Concert services.
Concert services, uh, but the times on their advertisements are 8:30 to 11:30 PM. Um, and currently our ordinance, our stated ordinance says that music is supposed to end by 10:00. I know, um, at some point, a previous board had given a verbal permission that they could have music until 11:00. Um, they're advertising 11:30 on their ad. Um, so I know we talked about this in the past, uh, but if we could at some point clarify when the music has to stop, I know 11:30, I think, is exceeding what we told them previously. Um, and there's some concern amongst these, uh, constituents that, um, they're gonna go, if they're not, if they're advertising 11:30, then it's probably not gonna stop until midnight.
Before we move on, I appreciate you bringing that up now rather than waiting. My recollection is, is that last summer I had asked you and Trustee Wigginton to get together and formulate some recommendations. Can you do that, or have you done that?
We will. We've spoken about it. Um, uh, we will revisit that topic again and, uh, have something ready the, the next meeting. But as it's, as it's enforced now, do we enforce the written ordinance?
Well, what we've been enforcing, if I remember right, it's been 11 o'clock.
Okay.
It's been 11 o'clock.
My understanding is not what is written.
I think the, yeah, that was because, like you stated, previous boards have given the okay, so we need to, we definitely need to clarify that, and we'll, we can proactively get involved. We have a great relationship with Robbie. Uh, we'll reach out and we'll get this.
Okay.
But I'd like to be able to have a, a concrete number when I go to him, so if you guys can work that out.
Yeah, definitely. And just to add, um, I, I hope that we can strike some kind of balance, um, cause I know the importance of the live music. Um, I don't know if we could possibly reach out to like Peoria Sound or some kind of sounding contractor to see if there's any kind of, um, I know some places like, uh, erect, like sound absorbers, um, that might prevent that sound from creeping out into Prospect, into the, um, neighboring, uh, neighborhoods, or if maybe turning the equipment so that it faces towards the building and use the building as a natural block. If, if there's something else, if we can bring in, I don't know, someone who, who can give us, um, their opinion on sound. I'm not a sound guy.
Well, knowing a little bit about that topic, I think your best bet is just to, if, if they would be willing to move the band and face the business, because the problem you run into is just, it's outdoors, it's a straight shot down Prospect. So I think there's some things they can do if they turn that around. There's some, uh, diffusers, some absorbers.
Right.
They can use outside. I'm not sure it's gonna pacify the complaint, but I think that it'd definitely help, but it's something I, I would like to cover all at once with him.
Okay.
So once we get a timeline as far as what you're looking at, I'll cover that with him.
Right, yeah, great businesses, great attractions. I, I, I really wanna try to strike a balance between.
In fairness, there are other venues that have outdoor music, so.
Right.
Not, it would not just be Poor Brothers.
No, no, not, but the gentleman who called me today was.
About that, yeah, thank.
Right. I, I thought that it was, uh, they could do it, but that every year we readdressed it, because it's our, and your suggestion of them turning the band facing, it's a good idea, because they do, they, where they're at, and they face Prospect, and well, there's nothing to stop that sound.
Right.
And when it's, at nighttime, the sound travels farther. I mean, my parents say that all the time when I was a kid, I was like, what? But, yeah, I, I mean, I used to live over in that area, and there's nothing to stop it. There's absolutely nothing to stop the sound, and that's a good idea, having, asking them to turn the band facing the building, it'd be a great idea. And I really think if they have it set for 11:30, they're gonna stretch it out to midnight, and some people have to, still have to work on the ne, the next day, so I don't have a problem.
Yeah, and some of the businesses, they're trying, like Oliver's, we've been working with them, I know that they're trying to come up with, uh, you know, uh, some construction, more of a, an, an indoor in their, in their outside bar, uh, maybe canopy with some, with some diffusers and stuff. So I've been working with Oliver's a little bit too, to see what they can do, because that was an ongoing complaint as well. So, you know, I think that we'll, we'll kind of hit all this the same, same time, so.
So disclaimer, I'm not a sound professional, but I know there are some devices that you can correct that absorb that sound.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I think that would be a, a perfect balance between the peace and the neighborhood.
It just depends on the amplification, it depends on a lot of things, but we'll definitely address it, so.
Okay.
Any other miscellaneous?
I just have one thing, Mayor, just a quick update. Uh, we talked a couple months ago on the demolition properties. Uh, the one we were talking about, uh, about a month ago was the property on Lake. I did get confirmation today that, uh, that is scheduled to come down the week of, uh, March 20th. It's been about a four-week delay because of insurance paperwork, so, uh, but that will be taken down, uh, the week of March 20th, so I just wanted to give you an update.
This is, this is probably something the village probably doesn't have proven to, but are they planning on building houses, or they went down, or?
I believe so. I have not had any discussions with the landlord or landowner, but I will, but as of right now, I would, I would, I would expect they would.
That, that's a narrow lot, I'm not, can we build?
Well, I, I think, I think, I mean, just preliminary discussions that they might just build one on, on both lots, just depending on, they own both properties, so.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Aldrich, any updates from you?
Uh, yeah, se, several things. First, the Together We Play Playground is on schedule for delivery, the equipment, uh, mid-March, so, uh, at that schedule, hopefully the weather's good and we can get in with our crews to start some of the demo work, like the first week in March, and that's coming up here pretty quick, so, uh, and I, I know there's talk about having a groundbreaking ceremony for, for that project as well. Uh, Congressman LaHood, we're trying to coordinate with his office to do an announcement for the Prospect Avenue, uh, appropriations announcement. Uh, I also hear there's other appropriations, uh, coming up soon, so, uh, we're kind of figuring out which projects that may be, you know, what we might want to apply for in that regard. Uh, we've been coordinating with, uh, IDOT for the Route 29 project, so, uh, making some progress with them, uh, in good partnership with them on that project. Uh, the other is, uh, the Water Capital Plan, uh, looking for, uh, uh, some time to schedule probably a work session with the board, uh, to discuss that plan, uh, at a public meeting. So the plan is basically complete, so I wanted to try to schedule a, a meeting with the board on that. Uh, good news, uh, related to that, um, there's a grant, uh, from Illinois EPA related to the lead service line inventory that I think we're, we're a good candidate for. I hate to say we're, we're there yet, uh, but, uh, uh, there's certainly favorable consideration for the village for that grant. There's also favorable consideration for the next step, which is the, uh, lead service line replacement. So that's, uh, the bigger pot of money through a state revolving loan program. So, uh, the EPA has sent us a letter today that, you know, we need to make some public announcement on certain items as far as environmental impact, that type of thing. So, so very positive about that and getting monies, uh, through the certain, uh, revolving loan program that.
And, and are those the pipes that go from the home to the main?
Yes.
Okay. Do we know what percentage of houses have lead pipes?
We don't know yet. Superintendent Chandler probably has a general idea, but that's what the lead service line inventory is for, so if we get a grant for that, um, we may bring to you a contract for a consultant to help with that, you know, and to spend those grant monies, uh, so we can determine that specifically, uh, and every lead service line, you know, would be replaced, hopefully with this revolving loan program then. So, so I think that's really great progress and really great to hear, uh, that news from the IEP, uh, that they're considering this for that.
And just to follow up on Congressman LaHood, he reached out to me this afternoon. We are tentatively scheduled for him to be here the morning of March 2nd, Thursday, March 2nd, to make an announcement on the $2 million for Prospect. Mike Bailey is working with their press secretary on that, and Mike, I'm assuming when that's all confirmed, you'll send out, um, the announcement to the board and all of us. Okay.
I have one more question.
Yes.
If I may, please. Um, several years ago, we passed an ordinance, um, and, or we expanded the TIF district to include neighborhoods with the expectation that at some point we would have a residential, uh, plan that residents could, um, apply for funding under. Do we know how close we are to actually launching that program? I know, I know we were waiting for the funds to build in the actual TIF account, but is that something that's gonna be happening soon, or?
Well, if you recall, we put that in place, um, it was a multi-pronged approach in kind of what I would describe as a test area around, um, Vincent and Atlantic off of War Memorial Drive. Um, at that same time, we applied for some DCO housing grants, which we have not been successful at, at least in, in the first round, so, um, Mr. Aldrich, I don't think, do you have any, any further news on those grants?
No, I, I, we weren't successful for that grant in particular, uh, but we still do have the, uh, Healthy Homes Grant that's out there with MEATAC.
So we're, we're, we're all, I mean, I would hope that this board doesn't let up, that we keep trying for these housing grants. Um, everything else is in place, and if you recall, we, the, we were hoping to use business development and TIF funds generated by commercial properties to help with the residential properties, so it's just a matter of grants, or, you know, if, if the village, um, wanted to identify a revenue stream to provide its own, um, monies, we could do that as well.
Okay.
Any other miscellaneous? Okay, we would be at payment of the bills. I'd ask for a motion to pay the bills.
I make a motion to pay the bill.
Second.
All right. Any question on any of the bills or discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. The bills are paid. Next is the treasurer's report. Madam Clerk.
As of the end of January, there was $7,476,430.80 in the village-controlled accounts. In the water-controlled accounts, there was $2,105,535.52.
You've heard the treasurer's report. I would ask for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the treasurer's report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion or question on the report? Madam Clerk.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
That passes. Before I take a motion to adjourn, uh, as you can see, the village funds are doing quite well, and without making any predictions, I think it's safe to say we'll be finishing out the year with a surplus, so as policymakers, Trustee Weisenberg just brought up the, um,